...to do is run you through a quick session on the, on our town meeting, its procedures, and mostly its procedures, because they're very important for you to understand. First, the, the history of the New England Town Meeting really began in Scandinavia and through, through the, through England. And the first town meeting in this country was held on the Mecklauer. And that started us on our New England traditional legislature. In Brookline, Brookline was incorporated as a town in 1704, and in 1915, and it started holding town meetings at that time. In 1915, Brookline was the first municipality in the Commonwealth to adopt the representative town meeting form of government. And that prevails to this day. As, as you're probably aware, could I have your name, sir?
Mike Carrington, B60.
Do you think?
Sixty.
Our democracy is under attack from a national level. And the town meeting is an, is a democratic institution that you should be proud to be a part of, because it's a, certainly a manifestation of democracy at its, at what many of us think is at its best. And I hope you're proud to be members of the, this unique society of ours. As you're probably aware, the town meeting in New England and in Brookline is the legislative branch of government. The executive is variously, mostly the Board of Selectmen, and of course, the voters are the voters. I think you should be aware that you're, of your duties as a town meeting member. From my standpoint, your principal duty is being aware of the issues that come before a town meeting, and being prepared to vote intelligently. You're also here to represent your constituents, to the extent that your constituents have a, a viewpoint about the issues that come before you. And of course, you're elected to use your judgment about these issues. So, let's get into the process, the town meeting process. The town meeting process starts with the issuance of the warrant, which is essentially the notice, the agenda, and a notice to all town meeting members and members of the community of the issues that are going to be dealt with at a town meeting. The warrant is issued 75 days, not later than 75 days before the date of a town meeting. So, the current warrant was issued in, in March for our May '21 town meeting. The warrant contains many articles, articles are the agenda items, many of which are created by the Board of Selectmen and the staff of the Board that put together repetitive articles and new ones that are generated through the town departments and the Board of Selectmen. It also contains citizens petitions. We have many of those in each town meeting, there are about 10 of them out of the 30 articles in this town meeting. And a citizen's petition can be generated by any voter who puts together a, an item to come before a town meeting and collects 10 signatures for most, most town meetings. And that, as long as there are signatures of registered voters, that petition is included in the warrant. Once the warrant is issued, and everybody is aware presumably of the agenda items to come before town meeting, there's a, a process of hearings of, that are conducted by the Board of Selectmen, by the Advisory Committee, by the Planning Board with respect to zoning articles, and by various other town depart, uh, town organizations and committees that are, have jurisdiction over the articles on the warrant. This hearing process takes place, starts almost immediately after the warrant is issued, and takes place, well, the last hearing will be, hearings will be held by the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee just before we convene the first session of town meeting next Tuesday. The hearing process results in a series of reports, which are issued as something called the combined reports. And you should all have received the combined reports, which is a package of reports mainly from the Advisory Committee and the, yes, would you hold that up?
I know.
And, and the Board of Selectmen, reporting on each warrant article. Very often, the, these committees, the committees with jurisdiction over these articles are not prepared to issue the reports, and so we have a, the combined reports come out about two weeks before the first session of town meeting. And the, there's a supplemental mailing, which is in the process of, well, I think it was probably mailed today, which contains reports that were not completed in time to be included in the combined reports. Those are very important for the purposes of your education and being prepared for what you'll be asked to make judgments about at town meeting. And by the way, as I go through this process, I'm happy to, please raise your hands if you have questions, and I'll respond to them as, as I go through the process, because it's, it's kind of complicated, and, and I encourage you to ask questions that occur to you, because that's, this whole process is supposed to be an educational one. So, moving along to our town meeting itself, we have a, excuse me, a series of rules and regulations that govern our procedures at town meeting, and these are variously statutory, there are a couple, a few bylaws that apply. Our procedural manual is a, not Robert's Rules, but a book called Town Meeting Time, which was, which was put together in the early 50s that specifically related to New England Town Meetings. And one of my predecessors was one of the three authors of the original edition of Town Meeting Time. You can obtain that if you're interested in parliamentary procedure by contacting me, and I'll tell you how. We have a town meeting handbook, which all of you should have received in a mailing to new town meeting members, which sets forth and consolidates these rules into one document that is the other important source of education and information relating to your duties of town meeting, along with the combined reports and the supplemental mailing. So, please, and, and what I'm doing here is really summarizing various sections of the Town Meeting Handbook that, that apply to our town meeting process. But it's a, it's an important document, and it sets forth, from my standpoint, most of the rules that govern us. The, how, how many of you have actually attended or watched the town meeting? Okay, most of you. So, there's a cast of characters. On the stage is the moderator, me, and the town clerk, and the various members of the Advisory Committee, there are 30 members, so they can't all fit at the table, but the ones who are charged with, with main, major responsibilities sit at the table on my left, and the Board of Selectmen, and Town Council, and, and the staff of the Selectmen, the town administrator, and the associate town administrator on my right. And of course, so those are the people in front of you, facing you, as town meeting members who are intimately involved in the process. The audio setup consists of microphones at the, at the, there are four microphones at the foot of each aisle in town meeting, and there's a speaker's dais in the middle podium, in the middle of, center of town meeting, from which most of the presentations are made. My role is essentially to maintain order at town meeting, to make sure that the process is adhering to the applicable rules, to establish and maintain proper decorum, and to set up in advance the manner in which the debates will be conducted. And I'll get into more of that a little later. And to, to rule on any issues that are raised with respect to the proceedings. We have, there was no appeal from the ruling of the moderator. Most of my, since we have the advantage of having a Town Meeting Member Association listserv, most of the issues that used to come up at town meeting are resolved in advance. And I make my, a number of rulings on various questions and issues prior to town meeting. If you want to...
Can you give a separate look at my view?
Well, the main, I think the principal issue that arises has to do with questions of whether possible amendments to items being presented to town meeting are within the scope of the article. And by that I mean, the article published in the warrant really defines the four corners of the issue that will come before you, and it's my job to determine that things that you want to do as town meeting members to, to amend the article are within the scope of the original article.
Now come up the role of sort of discussion?
No, it's usually, what, what I encourage, and all of you should adhere to, is, is to pass any, any of these proposed amendments by me and by Town Council for the purpose of determining in advance whether they're, they'll be allowable at town meeting. And that's, that's a main, my main, my main job really, prior to town meeting, is in sorting out these issues. I prepare lists of speakers and, prior to town meeting, and those lists are prepared from people who request, either by phone or by email, to be put on the list to speak to articles at town meeting. And I, I collate those requests, along with the speakers designated by the Selectmen and Advisory Committee, which are your main sources of advice at town meeting, to prepare speaker's lists. And what I try to do in preparing these lists is to organize a coherent debate on the issues that come before you. And in order to do this, I alternate pro and con speakers, if there's an issue on which there are people in favor of or against the proposal. I alternate those. I give priority to, always give priority to the petitioner of citizen's petitions, who is usually a designated person, or two or three people who I give first priority in terms of presenting their own articles. I also give priority to the representatives of the Advisory Committee and Board of Selectmen as the two bodies that have thrashed through most thoroughly the agenda items that we have to deal with at town meeting. I give priority to town meeting members over non-town meeting members. I give priority to people who may not be town meeting members, who are directly and potentially adversely affected by matters that come before town meeting. To give an example of that, there's a, there are three articles dealing with the Waldo, what is it, Waldo?
Durgan.
Thank you. Waldo Durgan Development, and there are people who will be adversely affected if that goes into effect, and one or two of those people have signed up to speak and will speak against the, against the proposal, or at least to point out to town meeting what effect adoption of the, of that, that development will have on, on their, their, on them and their, their retail establishments essentially. So, the, there are some protocols that you should understand that we adhere to at town meeting, that any questions from the floor are always addressed to the moderator. It's my function to determine who will respond to questions from the floor, and often there are hints given to me, but I'm, I pretty much know how best to handle questions from the floor. The, yes?
Question about, I'll ask a question about the questions on the floor. Is there, is there an opportunity, like is any questions, like do I just raise my hand, or how does that work?
Excellent question. What happens in present, in the presentation of articles is we'll go through a certain number of speakers. We'll always hear from the petitioner, we'll always, usually hear from the Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee, and if there are opponents to the proposal, we'll hear from a couple of them. And at some point, particularly if it's a, if it's a controversial issue, I will terminate the alternating speakers and take questions from the floor. So, the, the way that happens, I mean, it's, it's really my judgment, but I pretty much can tell when we've got an issue before us that, as to which town meeting members are going to have questions. And in those cases, I'll, I'll stop the debate, the signed up speaker debate, and call for questions from the floor. And those are, that's the opportunity for you to come to a microphone, and I take people for questions, comments, who have not signed up in advance, in the order in which they come to a microphone. And those questions I, are directed at me, and I, I choose the person who's the best, who's best able to respond to the question. So, what's important, one of the things that's important to understand is the difference between an article and a motion. The articles in the warrant are agenda items, but what you deal with at a town meeting are motions made under those articles. Sometimes the motion is in the words of the article, but very often, it's something that comes out of the deliberative process, the process of vetting the warrant articles that goes on before town meeting, and are motions proposed by typically the Advisory Committee or the Board of Selectmen. But those are the motions that you're voting on, not the articles themselves. So, there are a number of different types of motion. Under each article, you'll have a main motion, and it's up to me to designate which of competing motions is a main motion. And that is usually, it's, if a petitioner has a desired motion, that is always the main motioner, that is a citizen petitioner. In most other cases, the main motion is that of the Board of Selectmen or Advisory Committee. Motions can be amended, and it's the, any town meeting member can seek to amend a main motion, which are published in the combined reports, and that's another function that the combined report serves, is to put the main motion that will be put on the floor in front of town meeting, so that you, town meeting members, can decide whether you're satisfied with that motion, or whether you want to amend it. And if you want to amend it, then the process is to send it by me, and I determine whether it's within the scope of the, of the original article. The, there's a, yes?
So, could, could you actually amend, say, a warrant article that dealt with a funding issue that selectmen proposed?
Oh, yes. So, for example, the, this town meeting, we deal with the town budget, which is a $300 million issue, and any town meeting member can seek to amend any budget item. And as you have probably noticed, the original budget article called, let's just focus on Driscoll for a moment. The original budget article called for a bonding vote for Driscoll School. Both the Advisory Committee and Selectmen decided, perhaps taking into account the, the town-wide failure of Driscoll and Baldwin to succeed, and neither is supporting a bonding motion under that article. But Mr. Emmanian and several of his colleagues who are interested in, in moving the Driscoll project forward have proposed a resolution, which was contained in, is contained in your, in the supplemental mailing, which you can, you can, you can see if you, if you look at the, the, just today, within the last several hours, the supplemental reports have been, have been put online. You can access those, and you can see Mr. Emmanian's resolution, which is essentially to ask the Selectmen, town meeting cannot require the Selectmen to do certain things, but ask the Selectmen to put the, to put a debt override on the election, on the agenda before the next town meeting, to move the Driscoll process along. And when we get to the budget article, we'll have a debate on that, on that motion when we reach the item 67 in the, in the budget motion. And Mr. Emmanian will give his views, and there are some contrary views.
Question about that.
Yes?
Did Mr. Emmanian have a deadline to submit that?
Well, there, there's a deadline to have something included in the combined reports, and it's usually the Thursday, two and a half weeks before the first session is obviously passed, because the combined reports have issued. The deadline for the supplemental mailing was yesterday, and the supplemental mailing will go out, and you'll see a lot of, a lot of proposals and proposed amendments of, of articles in that mailing. If you miss the, that deadline, the deadlines are intended to force people to get their proposals into, into mailings, so that you, town meeting... to get their proposals into, uh, into mailings, so that you, town meeting members, and the Advisory Committee and the Selectmen can, uh, have some notice of what's being proposed, so that, uh, and what I require in my, my rules that are set forth in the Town Meeting Handbook, uh, is that at least, if you're going to make a motion, make amendment, it has to be in the hands of town meeting members at least 24 hours before the session at which it's going to be dealt with. But unfortunately, the first session of town meeting, there's no way effectively to get these motions in the hands of town meeting members, other than the supplemental mailing. I'm actually considering, uh, changing that rule to allow, uh, people to make proposals through, through an email process. I'm skeptical about that, because, uh, human nature is to defer decisions and, uh, you know, do things at the last minute. Well, a lot of last minute, flurry of last-minute proposals doesn't work very well at town meeting, because it doesn't give you, your town meeting members, and the Selectmen and Advisory Committee time to, to consider them and, and, uh, in a leisurely way. Anyway, that's, that's a process, it's kind of ongoing, but, but basically, for the first session, as the rules work now, if you have a motion or amendment that you want to make for the first session, for something that's going to come up in the first session, it has to be included in the supplemental mailing. For the second session, it can be passed out at the first session of town meeting, and that's, you know, that gives 48 hours. Yes?
So, doesn't that, like, leave, like, we're just having an orientation now? So, if we had a orientation 48 hours ago, then if I wanted to submit an amendment, I would know what the timeline was?
That's what's too late for us to submit.
Well, uh...
Yeah, for the first one.
Yeah.
For the first one, because the first one is the one that follows the one.
Yep.
So, if you want to have a real impact on something, then you would have had to have known, right? I'm just asking.
Yeah, so that actually...
Certainly, that, I mean, that's, that's a reasonable argument. The deadline is, uh, as it happens, six days prior to the first session of town meeting. Used to be five days, but the Postal Service, uh, our reliable Postal Service, never cooperated, and we pushed it back a day, uh, two years ago. Uh, the, uh, I send emails through the TMMA listserv that warn people about these deadlines. And what you got as a new town meeting member was a town meeting handbook and a copy of the email that, uh, set, that specified the deadline for the supplemental mailing. That's not to say that's a perfect way of notifying you, but, uh, we try. Yes?
Just for comparison, Jen Goldsmith, town meeting member, precinct eleven, which is how you have to introduce yourself at town meeting at a microphone, so that's practice. I just want to mention, you're describing the limitation of the U.S. Postal Service, but there, is there also consideration of distributing electronics? They know they've over and over been requested, partly for environmental reasons, not just timing, but is probably worth speaking to whether that's under consideration, and if it were, would I need to make that change?
Well, that's a, that's a very good question, and that's exactly what I'm considering at this point, is at least with respect to the first session of town meeting, uh, the, the town meeting listserv is a, uh, TMMA listserv is a dubious way to get information to people, because, uh, there are a lot of town meeting members who simply ignore it because of the amount of noise, uh, that is generated over this facility. But the town has a, has a, uh, the town hotline has a way of communicating with all town meeting members who have email addresses, which is something like 98% of them. And that's a, uh, that is the facility that I would use to address exactly that issue. That is, to permit people to, uh, if the, I mean, this is something I haven't checked out with or dealt with at town about, but, uh, they're usually pretty cooperative when I make suggestions. And if, uh, if there are late, um, amendments or proposals that don't make it into the supplemental mailing, I think that having those go out through the town, uh, email facilities is a, uh, may be a way to cure the problem. And, uh, I, I say I'm skeptical about it, only because of human nature, and the tendency of people to procrastinate. So, what I'm probably going to do is to set up a system like that and see if it works, and my, my definition of whether it works or not is whether, uh, people do in fact procrastinate and, and the late filings are, are too, uh, onerous. And, yes?
But, but for me, at least as a first-time town meeting member, I feel like there are some significant issues coming up, and if I wanted to offer amendments, I'm hearing you say that I missed the opportunity, and perhaps an additional fix to this is to move up the orientation thing, so that that sort of better aligns with allowing people to maximize the representation, uh, of the people that voted for them. Because I feel like if somebody called me now and said, "How about X?", I'd have to say to them, "Well, I didn't know it, but for purposes of the first nine warrant articles, there's nothing we can do." But if I had been here three days ago, I, I might have, it would be, I, I might not have issued any, I might not have done anything, but it would be because I made a conscious decision not to versus not being able to, if that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, that makes great good sense, and, uh, I think, so, the suggestion is that I hold this session, perhaps on the Monday of this week, uh, which is two days ahead of, ahead of the deadline for the supplemental mailing. That's a good suggestion. I will duly note it. Okay. Getting back to the, uh, town meeting procedures, so what, what happens at, at town meeting is that, that there's a main motion that's put forth, uh, that I announce, that is in writing and in either the combined reports or the supplemental mailing, but it's in writing in your hands at town meeting. And then we embark on a debate. And as I said before, the debate is, uh, a matter of alternating speakers, pro and con, if there is a pro and con. And there are probably, uh, six or eight articles out of the 30 in which there's an opposition, uh, but we'll have a debate, and the, uh, debate will proceed, and, uh, at some point, if the debate proceeds too long and, uh, the presentations and speeches start involving a lot of redundancy, uh, someone will move to terminate debate and, uh, have a, have a vote. Well, that motion is made, uh, fairly informally. That is, a town meeting, it's called, it's known as calling the question, which means, uh, calling, terminating debate and calling for a vote. And, uh, the motion is usually made by somebody just shouting, "Question!" And at that point, I have to decide whether, in my view, town meeting has had a, an adequate airing of both sides of the question. If I decide that it has, then I will allow that motion, and it requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting to terminate debate. If, if the, sometimes, many times, we've had occasions in which, uh, two-thirds of town meeting has not, uh, we haven't had a two-thirds vote on a, that motion to terminate debate, or we've continued with the debate. If the motion is successful, then we go directly to a vote. So that brings me to the voting process. There are a number of ways in which you vote. There is a voice vote that I can, I might, I, I call for the vote initially. I might call for a voice vote, particularly if I don't feel that there's any significant opposition to the motion on the floor. I may call for a, a hand, uh, ask you to raise your hands if you vote for or against, uh, because that gives me a better idea of what the, uh, what the vote is. But in any case, 35 town meeting members can require an electronic vote, and I will get to the electronic voting procedures shortly. And the way that happens, and it always happens if you've got a controversial issue before us, it will happen with Mr. Armenian's resolution, for instance. It is likely to happen with a, uh, with a couple of other articles. I can never predict this, because I don't call for an electronic vote. You do. And if there are 35 of you who want one, then we have one. And those, those votes are recorded by a town meeting member and are a matter of record for at least three years on the town website.
Are they available longer than that?
Pardon?
Are they available longer than that, if Pollak wants to see somebody's voter?
I think so, yeah. But there's, you know, there, there certainly, the town clerk maintains them on the town meeting portion of the website for at least three years. That's usually enough, uh, but...
I just think, is that if you have a three-year term, you're not for the election until three years, and so you're likely to check your records, the friends that...
Your, your records are right there, your voting record. And that's, uh, it's interesting, because in a, in a, uh, in an open town meeting, the purpose of an electronic vote is to keep people from having to, uh, raise their hands in front of their colleagues. In other words, it's exactly the opposite purpose than in a representative town meeting, where the purpose of an electronic vote is to record your vote, so your constituents know how you voted. Uh, that's just a...
Just, can you clarify, so if we do an electronic vote, is there like, I'm thinking of Congress, where like you would have like Senator Warren, and the next one would say yes or no. Is it going to say, if he's able to see my vote in the House, they should be able to...
Let's, let's talk, let's talk about the...
It's on the screen.
Yeah, let's talk about the electronic voting process. If an electronic vote is called, each of you will have received a handheld device when you check in with the, with the checkers in the lobby outside of the auditorium. Uh, you receive a electronic device, and I, I don't have one with me, but, uh, it, it has a series of numbers, and, and, uh, we do a test vote to make sure that your device is working, that your batteries did not fail, but they're, they're usually, I mean, the town clerk's office checks the batteries of all of these before they're passed out, so it's unusual to have a battery issue. But there's, there are three key numbers on the first row of your device, and one is a yes, two is a no, and three is an abstain. And, uh, what happens in the electronic vote is, I make sure, my responsibility is to make sure you know what you're voting on. And that's, you know, in the flurry of a, of a heated debate, it's not always clear to town meeting members what, uh, what they're being asked to vote on, so I need to make sure that you know what you're voting on. If you do, then we, uh, I have a couple of people from the IT department on the stage who show on the screen two things. One is, uh, the list of town meeting members, which you scroll through during and after the voting period, and the second is the, uh, voting period itself, which is 60 seconds under our current rules, and that counts down on the screen in front of you. And the third is the recorded votes. You need only press yes, no, or abstain once to be recorded. You don't need to do it again and again. And in fact, if you vote at the very end of the voting period, your vote is not likely to be recorded because of, of, uh, problem, that's an aberration of the, of the voting system, but, uh, so, the votes are recorded, they're, they appear on the screen. Uh, at the end of the voting period, I announce the result, which I read off the screen, and, uh, there is no appeal from the, from that announcement. However, uh, those of you who believe that your vote has been improperly recorded, despite having scrolled through the list of town meeting members and shown how they voted while you are, during the voting period and for 30 seconds thereafter, if there's somebody who believes that their vote has not been properly recorded, there's a process to correct that, which involves consulting with the, uh, the IT person in the rear of the auditorium, and then making your, uh, change, the change known to the town clerk. And, uh, the town clerk communicates those changes to me, and I'll change the, I'll tell people at their word, uh, and change the result of the vote. We've never had a situation where, uh, changes to that purpose, that is, people who thought their vote squared properly recorded, would have changed the result. But if I ever have a situation in which a change in, in a vote will, will change the result of a vote, uh, I will probably... of a vote, I will probably cross-examine that person at all of the town meeting to make sure that they're bona fide. That has not arisen, and I hope it won't, so that this is a process that, that really, so far, is only applied in situations in which votes have been improperly recorded. That, that shouldn't happen, and if you follow the procedures, it won't happen, but human error is rampant, so it sometimes does. So, in any event, I will announce a result. If it's a hand vote or a hand, or a voice vote, and seven town meeting members doubt the count, then, or may doubt my announcement, then I'll have an electronic vote on my own motion, simply to verify the, the result. So there's always a process of doubting what I have announced as a result. The, most motions require only a majority vote. There are a number of, of items that come before you that require a two-thirds vote, mainly zoning changes, changes in the zoning bylaw, and, and debt authorizations. Those are the two main things that require a two-thirds vote. By statute, I am permitted to take a hand vote and announce the result without taking the electronic vote or accounted vote, again, subject to the right of seven town meeting members to challenge my, my announcement of the result. There is a, yes?
Why aren't all votes electronic, given how easy that is these days?
Pardon?
Why aren't all votes electronic, given how easy that is these days?
Well, it takes about, under our procedures, it takes a couple of minutes to do an electronic vote. There are many votes that I, that take about five seconds. I just say, "All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries." Five seconds. And it doesn't make sense to me. In some town meetings, they do an electronic vote on, that is, towns that have adopted electronic voting, they do it with every motion, but I don't see any point in that. There is a process for reconsideration of votes that have been taken, but it's a pretty tedious process, and it's spelled out in pages, I think, twenty-two and twenty-three of your town meeting handbook. And it's tedious for a purpose, and that is to avoid, reconsideration is a, is a means of gaming, and a lot of town meetings, and I don't particularly cotton with any, and so I make it as difficult as possible for a vote to be reconsidered. On the other hand, if it's clear to me that there's been confusion on the part of town meeting members, or that there's been improper or incorrect information put on the floor that has influenced the vote, I will call for reconsideration on my own, on my own Once we complete all of the articles, if, well, once we, once we reach ten-thirty on the first session, we will complete whatever motion, whatever article is before us, and next Tuesday is likely to still be the budget article. There is enough, enough controversy about some of the budget items, so that I think the budget will take all night, and we may go beyond ten-thirty. But the general rule is, at ten-thirty, we complete whatever article is before us, and then I entertain a motion to adjourn. And sometimes, those motions fail. For instance, it's, on several occasions, we've run into a second or third night, and I anticipate that we'll take three nights this year. And we may only have two or three articles left at ten-thirty on the third night, and people want to, are willing to spend the extra half hour or hour, and the motion to adjourn will fail. But that's somewhat rare. At this town meeting, the main thing before you, the main item before you, of course, is the budget. That will take the entire first week. And the, there will be a debate on the Driscoll appropriation, which is, will not be before you, but is, there's no actual appropriation put, being put forward by even the advisory committee or selectmen under the Driscoll budget item, but there's Mr. Armenian's resolution, which we'll debate. We will take the articles in the order in which they are set forth in the warrant. However, it is always up to town meeting to change the order. And at this town meeting, we will have a motion to hear Article twenty, which has to do with female high teen accessibility, availability, the first thing on the second evening, because there are a number of clerk line high school students who want to present to town meeting, and we're always sympathetic to their desire to act and do homework for whatever they do. So, and, but that requires a vote at town meeting. And most always, when it involves accommodating high school students who are brave and energetic enough to get involved in the town meeting process, town meeting goes along with it. Town meeting has never been asked to change the order of an article to accommodate non-town meeting members, but I had to deal with that on a couple of articles this, this time around.
Who sets the order? I mean, is there, is there a method madness of what, what's the order?
The selectmen, the, well, the selectmen's office creates the order of the articles. Typically, in this town meeting, for instance, there are a bunch of, the first eight articles are fairly straightforward, routine, many of them. We hear them year after year, and then we get to the budget article. And that takes all night. Then there are, the next block of articles have to do with changes in the zoning bylaw or the town bylaws. And finally, in the order in which they've been accustomed to setting up these warrants, we get to resolutions and citizens petitions. If there's a citizen petition to change the zoning, that will take place in the block that's devoted to zoning and, and town bylaw amendments.
Okay, so it's like, it's sort of like board replays, money, zoning, resolution? Is that sort of the normal flow?
Uh, that's, it's generally, yeah, more or less.
Trying to get head back to it, though.
It will take a while. A lot will happen.
No, that's, that's, that's the way they set it up. And unfortunately, what that results in, the, the resolution articles are typically articles that have a strong but very narrow constituency, and so that, that attendance at town meeting tends to dwindle when we get to the last of the resolutions. Not to denigrate them. In fact, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about resolutions. You'll, I think there are a couple in this, in this town meeting, one, one of which has to do with changing the state flag. Items over which town meeting has no control. And there's a, there's a, there is a school of thought that town meeting ought not to be spending its time on things over which it has no control. There's another school of thought that our town meeting is a vibrant spokes, acts as a spokesperson for our town, and ought to be permitted to make our town's decisions known to the politicians that are going to deal with these articles. In any case, we, we entertain them, we deliberate about them, we, the selectmen and advisory committee take positions on them, and we vote on them. One of my predecessors, in fact, the moderator that I mentioned, who was a very distinguished lawyer, who was a co-author of Town Meeting Time, in the late sixties refused to allow any Vietnam War articles to come before a town meeting. And you didn't survive this nice election. So there was a lesson in that to all of his, all of his successors. So I, I certainly don't ever anticipate denying town meeting the, the opportunity to fold down a citizen's resolution. I have no, nothing further to add. Do you have any questions?